All right, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Mr. Maurer is here digitally. Mr. Reed is here digitally. All other members of the town council are present, besides Mr. Rooney, who will be absent this evening. But before we go any further, please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you are speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title, if applicable, at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call vote, unless the vote is unanimous. That features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. Item three on agenda is recognition of Rick Henderson, Banquet Recreation and Parks Association 2021 Volunteer of the Year Award. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm going to ask that Mr. Henderson come down here and see if he'd like to join us as well. We're really honored to have, I feel like I should say, a phenomenal member of our community here today, who has been recognized by the state association for all of his efforts. I'm going to read this proclamation, just so you know. It's an honor to be able to join Rick at a ceremony earlier. It was actually, it was last month, right? Yeah, I was trying to remember how long ago. And what you received this award. And he was there with his family, everything. It was very great, a great day to honor Rick. But I think it's important that we recognize him here in Monroe as well. So with that said, this is a proclamation from the Town of Monroe for Rick Henderson. Whereas Monroe resident Rick Henderson has volunteered as the leader of Monroe Alliance Football for the last 16 years, and whereas Rick has made outstanding contributions towards this program, which is an integral component of the youth recreational activities conducted at Wolf Park, and whereas Rick has fostered a strong partnership with our Parks and Recreation Department, maintained a standard of excellence for his league, and is a respected mentor for coaches and players. And whereas, upon the nomination by our Director of Parks and Recreation, Rick has been recognized by the Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association, presenting him with their 2021 Volunteer of the Year Award. And whereas it is appropriate to honor and recognize this remarkable achievement, now therefore I can then Kellogg, First Election of the Town of Monroe, hereby applaud Rick Henderson to his dedication in reaching this milestone of leadership and commitment to our, leadership and service, excuse me, to our community. Thank you, Rick.
We broke it down.
Manually.
You gotta put a new film there, Bill.
Sure.
I think he's clapping. I think he's digitally clapping.
Really?
Yeah, just giving a digital high five. I think it's supposed to be a raised hand, like I have a question, but I'm gonna convert it to a high five.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
All right. Oh, look, he escapes into the evening. All right, barring any objection from any member of the town council, I'm going to ask that we consider new business item B, boy, next, to accommodate some members of the public, which are here this evening. New business item B, Resolution 21-189, to consider an act upon a resolution barring Sprint for Monroe dispersment of funds. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-189 to consider an act upon a resolution regarding Sprint for Monroe dispersment of funds.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. We, so, Mr. First Election Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as we've come to expect through some incredible volunteers and their dedication, they've had another successful fundraiser, netting almost $14,000. And they provided to you in their December 1st memo, a recommendation of how those funds would be dispersed. And I just want to, I'd ask, invite them to come up and say a few words, but I want to preface it with my sincere thanks and gratitude for everything that the Sprint does for all these organizations for our community and just, you know, all the hard work that you do. Thank you. So, please, if anyone would like to, with your, with your permission, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please step forward. There is a single microphone on your right. Please just state your name and address for the record, and just speak loud enough so that the microphone can pick up your voice.
All right, well, hi, Megan. My name is Amy Primarick. I live at 320 Cross Hill Road. And I'm the race director for the Sprint for Monroe. This was our 29th year. And with me I have Dr. Paul Moise, who was, has been involved with the Sprint since year one. So, 29 years. And then this is Sister George, another member of the committee. And she's been involved with the race for, I think, seven years now. Yeah, same years, man. So, we had a wonderful year this year. You know, we were a little hesitant this year, so we pushed our race up to August. It's normally in June, just to try and keep it as safe and healthy an event as it could be. And in the end, we had over 350 people at Wolf Park on August 29, and raised, as Ken said, nearly $14,000, which we've asked to be dispersed to local organizations that benefit citizens of Monroe. We have athletic organizations, charitable organizations, the Food Pantry Project for Women, Alcohol Drug Awareness Monroe, Josh Bet Memorial Scholarship Fund. And we also are going to give some money to the Playground Foundation, which I see several people from that group are here as well. So we hope that you'll approve these donations so we can get the money to all these wonderful organizations. And thank you.
Anything else? Oh, all right, well, thank you very much. I can speak, I'm sure, for the entire time, counsel. Thank you very much for all your hard work. The town deeply appreciates all your dedication, hard work, year after year. Why don't we just give them a quick little hand? See, in town council, you get applauded, so please come on.
Next time, we'll stand for you.
Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of Resolution 21-189. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right. I am going to pass the consent calendar as presented. There are no objections. Going to ask that communications A through E, D, be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Public participation. First, I will turn to those members of the public that are here with us this evening. Are there any members of the public in town council chambers that would like to participate during public participation? Just jump up and down, my attention. Seeing none, I'm going to turn digitally. Is there a member of the public that would like to participate at this time during public participation? Please remember to unmute yourself. One more time, is there a member of the public that is attending either by phone or by computer or tablet that would like to participate during public participation? Please remember to unmute your microphone. Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation for the evening. Appointments. Item A, Resolution 21-181. Ms. Martin. This is Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask this council's approval for the appointment of Susan R. Lewis, Democrat of 54 Benedict Road to the Library Board of Trustees for a term ending November 30, 2027.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lepellis. Discussion, Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis has lived in Monroe for over 40 years, an avid library user, and has been a volunteer for many years at the library. She looks forward to continuing her connection to the library and to the community as a member of the Library Board.
Thank you.
And I would just add, if this appointment fills the expired term of Kathy Stevens.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on this matter. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Resolution 21-182, the nomination of Mr. Chin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask again this council's approval for the appointment of L. Scott Chin, Democrat of 25 Hammer Town Road to the Lake Zor Authority with the term ending November 8, 2022.
Ms. Martin has made the motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lepellis. Discussion, Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Mr. Chin's lived in Monroe for several years. He's a business and technology leader with 20 years of professional experience, frequent user of Lake Zor, and is looking forward to becoming a member of the Lake Zor Authority to discuss issues and projects happening at the lake.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of Resolution 21-182. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to two zero. I did, I was very absent minded. So I'm going to, is Ms. Lewis here?
No.
No, okay. Is Mr. Chin here? Okay, all right. Resolution 21-183, nomination of Ms. Wincoop. Ms. Martin.
Thank you. Again, I ask this council to approve the appointment of Karen Wincoop, Democrat of 35 Glen Hollow Road to the Board of Assessment Appeals with the term ending November 30, 2024.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lepellis. Discussion, Ms. Martin.
Ms. Wincoop has been a resident of Monroe for over 25 years. She's currently a Realtor with over 17 years of experience and believes her background with assessments makes her an excellent candidate for this position. Karen served on the Economic Development Commission and has also served on the Board of Assessment Appeals temporarily in 2019. And this appointment fills the expired term of Jonathan Schulman.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other discussion? Discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the resolution, on the passage of Resolution 21-183. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those in, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Item D, Resolution 21-184, the nomination. Oh, first, is Ms. Wincoop here?
No.
Yeah, okay. Item D, Resolution 21-184, the nomination of Mr. Smith. Ms. Martin.
Your Mr. Chairman, I would ask this council's approval for the appointment of Richard Smith, Democrat of 61 Hillcrest Road to the Economic Development Commission for a term ending January 31, 2026.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice Chair Lepellis. Discussion, Ms. Martin.
Mr. Smith has lived in Monroe for 10 years. He's enjoyed a long and notable career in engineering with extensive experience in aerospace, automotive, building systems, and electromechanical products. Since retiring in 2018, Rick has volunteered at the Food Pantry and the Senior Center and serves as a poll moderator for the Town of Monroe. He's excited to join the EDC to help bring more business and smart growth to Monroe. And this appointment fills a vacancy created by the resignation of Mary Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of Resolution 21-184. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight zero. I believe I did see Mr. Smith in the audience.
Yes.
Mr. Smith, come on down.
Price is right. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear, or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Economic Development Commission to the best of your abilities, so help you God, we're on penalty of perjury.
I do swear and affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. All right. Item E, Resolution 21-185, the nomination of Mr. Lindstrom. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-185. Resolved at the Monroe Town Council, hereby approves the First Election's appointment of Eric Lindstrom of 41 Parkview Lane to the Inland Wetlands Commission with the term ending February 24, 2025, and this fills a vacancy created by the resignation of Robert Soracco Jr.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, Madam Vice Chair.
Okay. Ms. Lindstrom has lived in Monroe for 12 years. He's a general contractor who has experience in all aspects of building projects and the appropriate regulations. He believes his expertise will be an asset to the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of Resolution 21-185. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Item F, Resolution 21-186, the appointment of Mr. Kelly. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-186. Resolved at the Monroe Town Council, hereby approves the First Election's appointment of Ryan Kelly of 131 Lynn Drive to Conservation and Water Resources Commission with the term ending September 5, 2022. This appointment fills a vacancy created by the resignation of Vincent Infante.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, Madam Vice Chair.
I know. Mr. Kelly has lived in Monroe for 26 years. Ryan moved to Monroe his freshman year of high school and is now raising his family here. He has a drive to get involved in helping Monroe continue to be the thriving community he has grown to love. I ask that this is placed on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there any other discussion on the passage of Resolution 21-186? Hearing no discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Resolution 21-187, the nomination of Mr. Stelmack. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-187. Resolved at the Monroe Town Council, hereby approves the First Election's appointment of Ron Stelmack of 95 Hillcrest Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals with the term ending November 30, 2026. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Ronald Schneider.
Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Stelmack has lived in Monroe for 34 years. Ron currently volunteers for St. Peter's Episcopal Church and is a volunteer emergency medical technician for the town. He has previous experience as a member of Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals and would like to use his experience to serve Monroe.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there any other discussion on the passage of Resolution 21-187? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Resolution 21-188.
Oh, we have one in the, oh, I guess he's here.
Oh, is he here? Oh, hello, please come forward. Sorry, I was, I was getting in the groove. Please, Mr. Stelmack.
Man, do you solemnly swear, or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals to the best of your abilities, so help you God, we're on penalty of perjury.
I do. Thank you.
Just to check, is Mr. Lindstrom or Mr. Kelly here? I think so. Okay, good. All right. Resolution 21-188, Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-188. Resolved at the Monroe Town Council, hereby approves the First Election's appointment of Kathleen Sosaki of 1 Underhill Road to the Commission for the Aging with the term ending July 2, 2024. This appointment fuls, fulfills the vacancy created by the resignation of Jamie Garzal.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, Madam Vice Chair.
Let's see. Mrs. Sosaki has lived in Monroe for three years. Kathleen is eager to get involved in supporting Monroe community. She has years of experience as a teacher for the city of Bridgeport. Kathleen lives in one of Monroe's age-restricted communities and is attuned to the needs of our aging population.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there any other discussion on the passage of Resolution 21-188? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. In favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight. All right, for our action items, first, I do have a few appointments to make, or announcements as well. Per our town code, the representative of the Town Council on the OPEB will be myself. Council members on the Pension Committee will be myself and Mr. Maurer. Item A, Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters. Vice Chair Lepellis will be on that committee. Donalyn Wales will be on that committee. Jessica Katuska will be on that committee as well. Given that committee has not met, their next meeting, they will elect leadership as well as plan for their future meetings, as well as pick up any other items that they were working on previously. Item B, Town Council Committee on Planning, Zoning, Public Works, and Park and Recreation Matters. Members of this subcommittee will be Terry Rooney, Sean O'Rourke, and DeeDee Martin.
Can I ask, who's on A again?
Oh, sure. Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety Matters.
Jen.
It'll be the Madam Vice Chair, Donalyn Wales, and Jessica Katuska. L and A was, last week, myself, Kevin Reed, Mr. Maurer. Mr. Reed, do you have any update this evening for L and A?
You know, I do, Mr. Chair. And we did meet. I'm actually chasing down our agenda item right now. If you would oblige me a second.
Sure.
Probably get into the right email and go from there. One sec. Okay, so we did meet tonight, and we discussed a number of items. We actually resurfaced the Blight Ordinance and Unfinished Business. So we're gonna, really quick update on that is we're gonna meet sometime in the middle of January and have a special, you know, public meeting where we're gonna specifically talk about blight. Focus of attention's going to be on the latest changes or the latest proposals. Maybe, you know, just the wording around the procedures of blight and administration and execution of blight within Town Hall and how blight is communicated to, to people. You know, if a complaint comes in, we're gonna go through that, that whole process. In addition, we're gonna start talking about the definitions. We've asked the First Election to see if he, he could start communicating with some folks in Town Hall to understand, you know, what are they seeing during administration of blight, execution of blight? What, what do they encounter? You know, their, their boots are on the road, not, not us, so to speak. They're, they have much more daily contact with it, so we're interested in their opinion in that space. So I know that First Election's going to start pursuing that. So we'll, we'll schedule that meeting sometime in the middle of January. We'll let everybody know when it is. And then we're gonna follow up again after we get some structure and foundation to that, to, to another public meeting where there, there will inevitably be some, some public participation, where the public can participate and give us their opinion as well. So still start looking for that in the middle of January. Items of new business tonight, we had A through F. A WMNR Corporation for Public Broadcasting Grant, Acceptance of Donation of 69 Cottage Street, Memorandum of Agreement with Monroe Playground, St. Jude Roman Catholic Church Corporation, First Amendment to License, Exhibits to the Site License Agreement with ARX Wireless, and Revisions to the Library Aid Job Description. And then we adjourned and came here. So that was our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Going on to Item D, Strategic Planning Committee. The appointments that committee will be myself, Donalyn Wales, and DeeDee Martin. Again, these committees that not, have not met yet will have leadership votes within the next month, I would say, to organize these committee meetings. I'll reach out to all the members of each committee to try to organize the initial meeting so that we can have a leadership vote. And then the committee chairs and the members can take it from there. EMS Building Committee, Mr. Rooney is not here this evening, so we do not have an update on that. Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee. Much like the EMS Building Committee, Mr. O'Rourke was placed on this committee by resolution, so he will continue to serve on that committee. Mr. O'Rourke, do you have any update?
I have no, we have not met since our last meeting. Just waiting, waiting for when that next meeting might be for a further report in the future.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Rourke. And finally, our First Election's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first part of the update, we'll just, I just wanted to, really just a recap of the same COVID update I provided to the community last week. As I think it's no surprise, everyone, the case rates have been, gone up significantly throughout the state, as they have here. We're seeing case rates that are pretty comparable to what we had about a year ago. But the better news is that while that is up, and certainly hospitalizations are also up, the rate of hospitalizations, the overall number, is not nearly as high as it was a year ago. Certainly something that we continue to watch. But we, in that regard, hospital capacity, ICU capacity, et cetera, is much greater than it was a year ago. Vaccination continues to be the greatest, you know, the best tool that we have in the toolbox. There are still breakthrough cases, but they are relatively small. About 1%, just over 1% of those vaccinated Connecticut residents have been tracked back to a breakthrough case. That's per the State Health Department. And they also gave some information of the last, last statistical analysis that focused that unvaccinated individuals are five times more likely to be infected and 12 times more likely of being hospitalized. We have been running booster clinics, as you know. We are now transitioning those from the kind of mass clinics to more individual appointments that are being done here in the Health Department offices with our public health nurse. We are starting to, we started this last week. Every Friday, we'll be posting any available appointments for the following week. That can all be done through the website in terms of making those appointments, so you don't even have to go through VAMs. So that's the COVID update. I wanted to recognize our Finance Department once again. This is the fifth consecutive year that the Finance Department has received this Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. This was for the fiscal year 2020 Annual Financial Report. Again, it's the highest award that this governmental accounting organization provides. And again, I just And again, I just want to recognize the really strong leadership of Ron Benofsky and Heidi Mead, who, who are leaders in this area. A couple of retirement announcements. Two very long-serving department heads have announced their upcoming retirements. First Police Chief John Salvatore has announced that he will be retiring at the end of February. He's served us for 23 years and certainly led the Monroe Police Department through significant development and growth. And our Chief Building Official, Gunnar Gaylord, has announced that he will be retiring at the end of January of next year. He's been with our Building Department for over 20 years, starting as our Assistant Building Official, and he's been our Chief Building Official for the past two years. So I just want to recognize them both. I'm sure you'll thank me for their, their service. Both those departments have really seen a lot of growth and development under their leadership, so we're very thankful. On the second page, I've just shared with you a list of many employees who are being recognized for reaching a mile, a milestone of years of service in honor, I'm sorry, in service of the town. I just want to honor them and, and thank them. So I won't, I won't read them all, but they're there for your review and we just, we want to recognize them all for having served for five years or more for the town. A quick update on the Wolf Park Field Project. So to follow up on the report from last time, we did receive the final report from TPA and their analysis of the different construction access recommendations. They did recommend option two, which was through the main park entrance for the construction access, access, excuse me. This was the same access route that was recommended and preferred by the Parks and Rec Commission. Their basis was on multiple factors, being cost-effective when taking into consideration not just the construction access, but also the permanent access, as well as the relative impacts to both the park operations and the neighborhoods. So TPA will be revising their design documents utilizing this route for that access. And from there, when they have those initial designs revisions completed, they'll be back, you know, again presented back to the Parks and Rec Commission to review that. And then we'll get direct, you know, direction to, you know, finalize those designs because obviously bid documents need to be finalized so that can go out to bid. We want to do all that. We get our land use approvals as well, subsequent to Parks and Rec kind of having their, their input on that design before we finalize those bid documents. So that is that update. And then last, but certainly not least, two business updates, two businesses where we have received applications. One is for a company called A Little More Space. It is a application for a 251-unit self-storage facility, which will consist of converting an existing building and construction of new, of five new buildings, which total about 16,000 square feet. That is on the former Stevenson lumber site. So that will be the third, the third business that, if they're, you know, assuming that they are approved, that will be the third business that will have been joining that, that former site and bringing that area kind of back to life. And secondly, as we have received an application for a, a new Dunkin' Donuts, for a new 2,000 square foot building with a drive-through at 395 Monroe Turnpike, Turnpike. This would be a standalone facility in the Village Square Shopping Center. And that is the updates. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. First Electman. First, it will be the night of clapping, as I said earlier. I would just like to recognize, and I hope the Town Council recognizes with me, the main contributions and tremendous service of Chief Salvatore, as well as Mr. Gaylord, for their many years of tremendous service. Yes, Ms. Martin.
Mr. Callag.
Yeah.
The, we, I think we would be remiss if we didn't mention that Sandy, who is Chief's executive assistant, I guess, is also retiring.
She is, yes. My practice has been to announce the department heads here at council. There's, there's certainly many employees that have retired, but you are correct. Sandy, yes, has been here for many years, is the chief's assistant. And yes, she has, she will be retiring as well. And we certainly thank her. I thank all of our employees, but I
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We want to thank Sandy for, for many years of service as well. Anything else? Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to close our action items. We have no matters of unfinished business this evening. We do have a few items of new business. Item A, acceptance of the following donations that individually exceed $1,500. $2,000, Steve Butler for Social Services. Can I have a motion to accept the $2,000 from Mr. Butler?
So moved.
Motion by Cheryl Lapelis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by DeeDee Martin. Discussion, Mr. First Electman.
None other than, obviously, we extend our sincere gratitude for such a generous donation. As we know, that the, the work of social services is broad and it will certainly be put to good use for those in need in our community.
Yes. Thank you very much, Ms. Butler, for your very generous donation. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight. We voted and considered item B, so item C, Resolution 21-190, to consider an act upon a resolution regarding the acceptance of donation of 69 Cottage Street. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-190. Resolution resolved that in accordance with the resolution authorizing the sale of real estate and acceptance of gifts of real, of real estate adopted out of Town meeting on June 28, 2021, the Town Council hereby accepts the donation of 69 Cottage Street and authorizes the Town Attorney and First Electman to execute all documents and take any such proper actions as necessary to complete acceptance of such donation of real property.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donna Lynn Wales. Discussion, Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as, as you'll all recall, this, the council had passed Resolution 21-80 some time ago, which, among other things, authorized this council, upon a two-thirds vote, to accept the donation of 69 Cottage Street. This was primarily driven by the fact that it is adjacent to another larger parcel that's also included in another, in, in an authorization relating, in the same resolution, an authorization that we may consider future for sale. The, the resolution was subsequently adopted at a Town meeting pursuant to our charter. I did refer this to our Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to Section 8-24 of the state statutes. The Planning and Zoning Commission returned a favorable recommendation, which is also included in your packet. The Town staff have visited the site to confirm that there's no obvious concerns, there's no structures. Town Attorney has done his due diligence, confirmed that there are no title issues, and he has worked to secure from the property owner a warranty deed, a copy of which is in your packet, along with his letter of opinion. So with that, I believe all is in order. Ms. Callahan has been extremely patient for many, many years, trying to effectuate this donation. I would ask that the council adopt this resolution tonight so that we may finalize it once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. First Electman. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight. Two, zero. Item D, Resolution 21-191, and considering act upon a resolution regarding the memorandum of agreement with Monroe Playground Foundation. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council act on Resolution 21-191, resolution that Kenneth M. Callag, First Electman of Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver the Town of Monroe memorandum of agreement and any associated documents filed between Monroe Playground Foundation for the Wolf's Den Playground Project.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Donna Lynn Wales. Discussion, Mr. First Electman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as, as you're all well aware, the Town's been working in cooperation with the Monroe Playground Foundation for the complete rebuilding of the playground at Wolf Park. The project was presented several years ago, back in 2018. The Parks and Rec Commission and subsequently the Town Council provided their approval to move forward with this concept. And as I previously reported, the existing playground, which is known as Kids Creation, will be removed and completely rebuilt as the Wolf's Den by the Foundation. And the Foundation would subsequently donate that to the Town. I've been advised that they are at an exciting point where they're very close to being able to move forward and they've scheduled, would like to schedule construction of the new playground in May of next year and, and discuss when we could schedule the demolition of the old playground in the near future as well. I did refer this matter, again, pursuant to Section 8-24 of the statutes, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review as required by statute. And the Commission did meet on December 9th and return to me, which I believe was added to your packet on December 10th, a favorable report. So again, since this is now at the point ripe for consideration, I directed the Town Attorney to draft with, we, we had several meetings with input from myself and other relevant department heads, a memorandum of agreement that would kind of memorialize our understanding between the Town and the Playground Foundation and how the logistics and donation would work. That MOA is in your packet and ready for consideration. And I would just ask that, you know, prior to any further discussion, with your permission, I'd like to invite Dan Keen, who's the president of the Foundation. I believe he has some other, I know he has some other folks, Nino, Mr. Hirsch from the Foundation as well. Simply to give you, or this council, kind of an update. I know the, the Parks and Rec Commission has had kind of updates from time to time from, from Missy and more so from the Playground Foundation directly, but it's been a while since the council has really been brought up to speed on some of the logistics. So with your permission, ask them if they come forward and give us a very brief update.
Come on down. Again, name and address for the record, just speaking to the microphones that we, those that are not here this evening can hear you.
Daniel Keen, 122 Swenson Drive.
Is that?
Mike Canino, 85 Wilbrook Terrace.
Is that laptop awake, or is it?
It appears to be awake, yeah.
Okay, so. Go for it.
Go on the screen. So folks, thanks for having us here tonight. It's nice to be back to present a brief update, as Ken put it, on the heels of this really exciting milestone, where we kind of formalized this agreement and get to some exciting parts of the project. So I wanted to do is just kind of take you through where we are, talk about some of the concepts that kept going on, and really talk a bit about, you know, what we've been doing over the last three years through COVID and everything else. This was always about more than a playground for us. The playground is obviously a wonderful thing, right? But our vision in all of this is a new playground and a new generation of community servants that can say, I helped build that, right? And one of my favorite stories to tell through all of this, some of you may know, I've talked about this before. Growing up in Upper Gwinnett, Pennsylvania, I was part of a Leathers build, just like we have here, that was built around the same time period as our existing Kids Creation Project. And over the summer, we took my kids back to that playground that my parents helped build. And so my father was able to take his grandkids to that playground and say, look, I helped build this part of the playground and here is the picket that, you know, we purchased with the family back then. So it really is about, you know, giving back, but also making that permanent mark on Monroe, right? And saying like, this is something that will be, I'll be able to remember and say, remember when we did this? Remember we all kind of came together to build this, this thing that now exists in the town, right? So it's all about coming together and doing that. Our mission, right, with the playground itself, is to create a new community-built playground that's uniquely Monroe and enable side-by-side play for all the children of Monroe and beyond. One of my favorite things about Wolf Park is that it's open to more than just Monroe residents, right? We're one of the few parks in the area that has a parking area where people can come from outside the town and park and go and use our facilities. So it serves all the kids in Monroe, but also the greater, you know, greater area as well. And our strategy through all of this has been to leverage our personal connections and professional experience, community service, execute public events that build awareness for our cause, recruit volunteers, raise funds for the playground, and attract donors. And from those things, we're really identified, I apologize for the R-I chart here, we identified really four major objectives to get this done. We've got to design the playground, we need to raise the money, engage the community, and ultimately build the playground. So we've hit some great milestones, as, as Mr. Callag alluded to. We are 60% fundraised with a major donor on deck pending the MOU execution tonight. And we're really focused on closing that gap between now and May. We're recruiting volunteers. We've got our volunteer committee formed. We've got more than 150 people who have actively indicated they want to help with the build. And through our events and other sales and things like that, we have interacted with more than 1,500 other families in the Town of Monroe. Our plans include finalizing the site engineering, recruiting the Arts and Special Features Team, completing the build-out of our volunteer registration system, doing community outreach, select events focused on recruiting volunteers and purchasing long-lead items. Like the rest of the world, supply chain issues and things like that, we are not immune from that as well. There are some things that have kind of come about because of the Playground Foundation that I just want to take a moment to highlight, whether it's Party in the Park, the Snowball, the Friday Supper series we did, Light at Monroe, which is going on right now, our Santa Drive-Thru and Santa Breakfast that we just finished executing over the weekend, Virtual Bingo Cow Plop. These are all events that have entertained and attracted Monroe families for the last three years that we're just really excited and proud of and are all part of that strategy that we talked about before to really get this done. As I alluded to, our key risk to the project remains meeting our fundraising and volunteer recruitment targets, but we have a very motivated team that is up for the challenge and looking to get this done by May. And you can see in our five-month look ahead what we're planning on here. With the major fundraising push in January, we've got our Fire and Ice Ball. We're hoping to have all of our Town approvals and site prep done by March. Our final volunteer recruitment begins. April is a slack month to allow for any slippage there, and then Build Week in May. It's all about steady growth and building blocks. As we talk about how we got to where we are, talk about the foundation phase, where we formed our 501(c)(3), we had our seed donors. We really had to prove ourselves to the community that we were here to stay, that, you know, we were a new organization. And we've really been in the expansion phase for about the last year to 16 months, where we're breaking into smaller teams, executing on key parts of the project. And we're right in between that expansion phase and execution phase before we get to the new playground. A bit about how we're organized, and when I talk about us getting bigger in that expansion phase, we have a Board of Directors that is in partnership with Leathers and Associates, who's the architect on the project. And we've also spun out a volunteer committee, a construction committee, and an events and fundraising committee to, to round it out. We started out, we were pretty much around 12 to 13 board members for a couple of years there. We've now grown to about 25 people, all working across these committees to really get this project done. All of this in service of the Wolf's Den Playground, which is the conceptual design that you guys see in, in front of you there, which you've probably seen before, but just I like to highlight it. And then I wanted to talk a bit about, when we talk about sponsorships and things like that, some of the signage and the ways the playground will ultimately look. One of our hosts, as we recruit this major donor, is that the top lot will be named as a major donor. So we'll have the, the Wolf's Den Playground, which was named by the community through a contest. And then there's another part of the playground there. You see around the fence there on the bottom of your screen, that is the top lot for kids under five. The five is really what that's designed for. And that'll be named for our, our major donor. Couple more angles there of the different signage that we're looking to have in that area. And then these are some pictures from over the summer of that same build that I alluded to in my hometown, showing some of the ways we'd like to recognize people who are sponsoring components. You can see that there's these, you know, fairly tasteful little plaques that go on some of the components that, you know, would say, you know, people would be able to say, this is what I sponsored. Another couple example of, of those there. These have been discussed with Parks and Rec as well. They were comfortable with the signage and approved that at a meeting a couple of months ago. And then the overall sign that goes in front of the playground, it's a four-sided sign where we're it's a four-sided sign where we're talking about having donor recognition and foundation recognition. We're hoping to donate, sorry, to dedicate one of the sides of that sign to our major donor. And then, of course, one side of it will be dedicated to the town of Monroe and the leadership that's helped us get this project done over the last few years and recognizing all of the town's contributions as well. So what's next? Please tune into the Monroe Holiday Spectacular on December 23rd, premiering on YouTube. That's where we're going to announce the winners of Light Up Monroe this year. And Snowy the Snowman will probably make a, make a return appearance. We're working on recruiting our construction captains who'll help oversee the bill. Hoping to see a town council build team, maybe Build Week, if you guys are interested in that. We'll be approaching local businesses, the Fire and Ice Ball, and then obviously finalizing site plans and working on, finalizing plans for the demolition and disposal of the current playground. Any questions? Mike, anything you want to add there? I kind of rapid fired there. I mean, we're here to answer any questions to pass.
I'll turn up to council, any members of council have any questions before we vote on this resolution?
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mauer.
You're, you're very tiny on the screen, so.
Let me just unshare these, hold on, we'll just share the desktop there.
There you go. All right, go ahead, Mr. Mauer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to take a moment to thank this, the Playground Committee for now what has become years of hard work. I know when you all set out for this, there was a timeframe in mind and that timeframe through many different things got expanded and expanded. And just to see this really coming to fruition here and the labor, the labor of love that you guys all put into this for our community and for our children is just so meaningful. So just an extremely heartfelt thank you for everything you guys have done and will continue to do. And I can't wait to be a part of the build and see it all come together. So thank you.
Thank you. We've got a great team behind us that are very dedicated to this. And it's been longer than we anticipated, but it's, you know, there's a lot of fun that's going to happen as well.
Ms. Martin?
I would just add to that, I was part of the build of the original one there.
Me too.
Now we both were. Looking forward to do it again.
Awesome. I love that. Thank you.
I don't think you look any different, DeeDee.
No.
When was this?
1992.
Oh.
So, so it's been a, do you know what month, like in the spring or anything?
I think it was towards, like a September timeframe, something like that. Yeah.
So you're saying it's older than I am?
Sounds like a mom saying.
Really didn't have to say how old I am.
Well, you got a real place, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to recognize and thank Attorney Matt Hirsch, who's present this evening. As we have a couple of attorneys on Town Council, I think you will be able to appreciate working with another fellow attorney, volunteer who's knowledgeable and was able to give some good insight into the agreement in a very prompt, timely fashion that allowed us to get before this council. So it came together quick. Mr. Keen supplied a ton of information very promptly as well, so I want to thank him for that. But it just makes it a lot easier when you're working with a fellow member of the community who understands the goals to get this thing moving forward. I think we have a comprehensive agreement, probably more comprehensive than we need, but a comprehensive agreement that for a great project, that just one of those feel-good stories. So I just want to thank him for that.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Lito, as well, for all your assistance in getting the agreement drafted. Thank you, Hirsch.
That's it.
Thank you very much, Attorney Hirsch. Oh, more class. Look at that. Trying to increase the attendance at Town Council meetings. Thank you very much. All right, so I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of Resolution 21-191. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8 to 0. Item E, Resolution 21-192, Consider an Act upon a Resolution Regarding St. Jude Roman Catholic Church Corporation, First Amendment to License Agreement, and Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-192. This is adopted by Kenneth M. Kellogg, First-Electman of the Town of Monroe, so authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the First Amendment to the License Agreement and any associated documents by and between St. Jude Roman Catholic Church Corporation for Parks and Recreation Programs.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, Mr. First-Elect.
Thank you. So as you recall, we've utilized the former St. Jude School Building for certain programming a couple of years ago for Parks and Recreation, primarily for the gymnasium space for programming. We did that through a license agreement, a fee-based license agreement with St. Jude. Obviously, last year, for pandemic reasons, we did not utilize that. However, Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Oros, is looking to utilize some gymnasium space again in the near future. Like to get that going. Furthermore, she's actually looking to provide some recreation programming, not just for her typical program, but also for some senior center recreation activities as well that will be done through her. So with that, I asked Attorney Lito to assist in getting an agreement together. Given we had an agreement in place from last time, but it had expired, he very efficiently put together a First Amendment to that agreement, which extends it through the end of this fiscal year, allows for a much more flexible scheduling than we had in the original agreement, basically just as mutually agreed. It does increase the rental fee slightly, as required by St. Jude, but still a very favorable rate. And other than that, we'd like to move this forward so we can add some more programming for Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mr. First-Elect. Is there any other discussion on this matter? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of Resolution 21-192. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8 to 0. Item F, Resolution 21-194, to consider Act upon a Resolution Regarding Exhibits and Site License Agreement with A.R.X. Wireless Infrastructure LLC. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-194, resolve that the Town Council accepts and approves Exhibits A through G of the Site License Agreement by and between the Town and A.R.X. Wireless Infrastructure LLC, which agreement was previously adopted pursuant to Town Council Resolution 21-123 and hereby authorizes Kenneth M. Kellogg, First-Electman of the Town of Monroe, to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe all agreements contained in such exhibits, any and all amendments and/or other documents which may be necessary to effectuate the performance intent of said agreements.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, Mr. First-Elect.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you all recall the original resolution that's referenced in this resolution whereby that master agreement was, was authorized. At the time, Attorney Lito had referenced the fact that additional agreements would be forthcoming, which are more specific to the previously discussed ability of the town to relocate and upgrade some public safety communications equipment on the new tower, which would make us a, a leasee on the tower as well. As you know, that's all in exchange for rent abatements as per that master agreement. Again, my thanks to Attorney Lito, and I know he has told me many occasions as this, ended this council, extreme thanks to Rosemark Law, which has done a remarkable job. As I mentioned in LNA, I don't think we would have such a comprehensive package of documents in this detail, really in favor and in protection of the town if Rosemark Law was not involved and we were not afforded their level of expertise. So you have Attorney Lito's letter of opinion in this regard. This would authorize the execution of the agreements that are contained in these exhibits.
Thank you, Mr. First-Elect. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of Resolution 21-194. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 2 to 0. Item G, Resolution 21-195, Consider an Act upon a Resolution Regarding to Revisions to Library Aid Job Description. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 21-195, resolve that the Town Council hereby approves proposed revisions to the library aid job description and authorizes the First-Electmen to implement as is practical.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, Mr. First-Elect.
Thank you. So this is, again, part of our ongoing effort to update job descriptions. This is a part-time position in the library with some relatively straightforward upgrades to simply revise the document to accurately reflect current responsibilities and best practices. So this is based upon recommendation of our library director, Nicole Segoli, who is online, as well as our HR director, Craig Hirsch, who's in the back. I think it's relatively straightforward changes.
Thank you, Mr. First-Elect. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Martin?
Could I ask if the, this was done in consultation with the, the new director? Did the library board have any input into this?
I, I don't know if the library board was, I mean, Nicole can advise if she had discussed it with them, but it's, again, really straightforward.
Very straightforward.
Very straightforward and typically not, you know, I mean, certainly if they have some, some input, if there was a question, but, you know, there's really no, typically not, the library board doesn't typically get involved in staffable job descriptions. But I don't know, Nicole, if you want to unmute yourself and just, I'm sure you discussed it with them.
Because, yes, thank you for your time. Basically, these descriptions was really to make it more consistent to what the, what the market is out there. It was not brought up to the library board, but this was something that we were doing internally, trying to get this done for openings that were going on. If you look at the intent of the changes, it's really wording instead of changing anything really dramatic into, in that job description.
I agree.
Thank you, Nicole. Any other discussion? Other discussion, I'm going to vote on the passage of Resolution 21-195. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8 to 0. Item H, Resolution 21-196, Consider an Act upon a Resolution Regarding Opioid Pending Litigation. Do I have a motion to enter executive session inviting the First-Electmen as well as the Town Attorney?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Rapelis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donalyn Wales. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, we'll enter executive session. It passes 8 to 0 at 9:08 p.m.
Thank you. So for those of you online, a little bit different than we've done in the past, since we're using a new platform, you will not need to disconnect. Instead, I will be moving, anyone who wishes to remain on, who's not on council, I will move into a waiting room. And once we're done with the executive session, I will put you back into the main meeting. So you're welcome to just stay logged in and you'll just be in a waiting room. So just give me a moment to.
To our members of the public, we do have to ask you to leave at this time. If you have anything to hand in, we can take it now so you don't have to wait until we come back. You're more than welcome to come back. Thank you. Items on our agenda, or just enjoy the evening. Two more items. Two more.
I was nowhere in my pajamas.
Okay, the, one second. Off the waiting room. Okay. Think we're good and everyone who is waiting is in.
Good.
Always good.
And we are.
All set?
We are recording again.
Yep. All right, we have exited executive session at 9:23 p.m. We are back in our regular session. No votes were taken during our executive session. Is there a motion, Madam Vice Chair?
I move that, we're going on to 196, correct?
Yes.
The opioid, yes, okay, yeah, just made sure. I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 20-196, resolve that the Town Council hereby approves the proposed nationwide settlement agreements resolving all opioid litigation brought by the states with local political subdivisions against the three largest pharmaceutical distributors, McKedden and McKesson, Cardinal Health and AmerisourceBergen. And one manufacturer is Johnson &amp; Johnson and its parent company, Janssen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated. And further authorizes Kenneth M. Kellogg, First-Electman of the Town of Monroe, upon the consultation and written approval of the Town Attorney to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe all documents necessary to achieve the town's participation in the settlements, including without limitation, execution of any and all participation and settlement agreements.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donalyn Wales. Already had a discussion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8 to 0. Aye, Resolution 21-197, and Consider an Act upon a Resolution Regarding an Amendment, Town Council Rules of Procedure. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 20-197, resolve that four of the Town Council Rules of Procedures are hereby amended to replace the words at 8:00 p.m. with no earlier than 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Donalyn Wales. Discussion, this was put on the agenda and you will see my note. I ask that we change, this is also in conjunction with item J, that we consider moving our meeting times for January of 2022 to 7:00 p.m. instead of 8:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
For, for what we've seen is many of our towns' boards and commissions meet around the 7 o'clock hour. 8:00 p.m. is an outlier for most of our towns' meetings. Additionally, taking in consideration all the hours that our paid staff put in during the regular working day, I think it is only fair to them to move up our meeting times to 7:00 p.m. so that they can have time with their friends and family in the evening while not overly burdening them by going late into evening. As many of you know, during, during budget season, during regular town council meetings, though we've been pretty good recently, it can go late into the evening. And having our paid staff come in at 8:30 in the morning and having to work till 10:30 at night is quite, quite onerous and quite a big ask, I believe. And moving our meeting times to 7:00 p.m. for the next calendar year, I think it is an appropriate measure for us to consider in the fact that other town boards and commissions meet within the 7:00 p.m. hour. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Chair? Mr. Mauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, in general, have no issue with moving the time up. I do just want to present a couple of pieces of information. One being, one of the things that having the later meeting does allow for is for those staff members who are working those long hours to have some time to go home, have dinner with their family in between their workday and this meeting as, or to go out and have dinner with friends or whatever the case may be, something just to put forward there. Also, we do have to consider that there will be times that we need to call a town meeting that we often do prior to the meeting. And going earlier than 7:00 sometimes puts a little bit of a onerous task on people to get to those meetings on time. And then there's also the consideration that there is the LNA meeting before all of our council meetings, that if we're starting at 7:00, those will likely have to start around 6:30 or even as early as 6:00, which could be difficult for, for members of LNA. which could be difficult for members of LNA. My personal preference on this would be to... We can approve the "no later than 7:00" meeting for the language of the policies and procedures. And then going on to the next item, which we can discuss at that point as well, would be to go for a 7:30 meeting rather than a 7 o'clock meeting on all the meetings. This accomplishes a couple of things. One, it does give a little bit of space in between. Two, LNA would be starting most likely around the 7 o'clock time. And three, if we do have those 7 o'clock town meetings, we don't have to change the time of our scheduled meeting. It's already at 7:30. It also keeps us, does give us that extra half an hour block earlier, so we're not going quite as late into the night. Like you said, although we don't do that often. That's just my feelings on this, is that 7:30 is in a more appropriate time for a multitude of reasons that, especially with those town meetings. If we have the town meetings and an LNA meeting with a 7 o'clock, we're going to be possibly starting one of those at 5:30, 5:45, to be able to get both in before council, and that could be troublesome for not only council members, but members of the town to be able to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Any other discussion? Ms. Martin.
Yeah, just a quick question. If your terminology is "no later than 7:00"?
No earlier than 7:00.
No earlier than 7:00.
So our regular meeting will not occur earlier than 7:00 p.m. Our current language says "shall be held at 8:00 p.m." So we give ourselves a little legal room with the change in language, "no earlier than 7:00."
Then is, logistically, is there any reason we couldn't, for example, have a public hearing at 7:00 and start the council meeting at 7:30?
Well, what I will say is the next motion, or the next item on our agenda specifically states that our council meetings will be held at 7:00 p.m., those regular meetings. So if we were to have a special Town Council meeting, we could set really any time.
But regularly, which is when, like a town meeting or something would be it?
It could be, or it could be different depending on the scheduling of our First Selectmen.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't affect a public hearing that the council was holding, because that could be placed on your regular agenda, so that could start at 7:00. But a town meeting would certainly have to be either a special meeting or a different time, yeah.
Is there any way to... I don't know, we couldn't do it this evening, probably, but rework that? The language, so that it covers that concern?
You could always, in that circumstance, you could always postpone the time of your regular meeting for that particular meeting as well.
Something that the chair could do, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that's... The 8 o'clock's in the rules of procedures, is that correct?
Yes.
Is... Does the charter state a specific time?
Not to my knowledge. No, this was in the rules of procedure.
Okay, good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, so this vote is going to be on the passage of 21-197, which changes our rules from 8:00 p.m. to "no earlier than 7:00 p.m." All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8 to 0. Next item on our agenda is the proposed meeting dates for 2022. We have our proposed meeting dates. They are our traditional meeting dates. Just noting for the record, July, August, and December, there is only one meeting, as we have traditionally done. Additionally, in certain months, we do have, specifically, I think in October, we have one meeting in October, which will be held on a Tuesday, because Columbus Day will be that Monday. As I stated before, the time selected will be 7:00 p.m. for the mentioned reasons that...
I can check the Jewish holidays, but that's fine.
So it'll be 7:00 p.m. along with those changes that we spoke about before. And do I hear a motion to accept the meeting schedule as presented?
Sound off.
Motion by Ms. Martin. Is there a second?
Second.
But...
So Ms. Martin just... I don't know if it's... I'm just mentioning it. Mrs. Martin, it's about like the Jewish holidays. Did you look at a calendar? I didn't.
No, I didn't. If there is an issue with that, we...
You can always change it.
We can cancel it, and we'll have a vote at that time, I don't believe. That's typically in October for those who celebrate it.
Could be late September also.
It is September 26th, that is a Jewish holiday. We'll address that as we get closer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I may, just to... After Ms. Martin's question, so... The... Sorry, I just lost my... So the charter speaks only to the first meeting after the election.
8 o'clock.
And states that the newly elected council will have its organizational meeting at 8:00 p.m.
That's all.
Fourth Monday. Following that, it says that the council shall approve a schedule of regular meetings, including determining the time, dates, and places of such meeting. So it's only prescribed your first meeting after the election. Terms of time. But it's a good question.
So we have a motion, we have a second.
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mauer.
I make a motion that we approve the calendar as presented with two changes. One being, change Monday, September 26th to Tuesday, September 27th. And two, make the Monday, November 21st, meeting at 8:00 p.m. In order to comply with charter.
Is there a second?
I'll second one.
Discussion, Mr. Mauer. So your second one was November 21st to 22nd?
No, November 21st would be moved to 8:00 p.m. because that's the first meeting of the... Oh, actually, never mind. It's not an election year.
Mr. Mauer, would you withdraw your motion?
Withdraw the motion. Motion to approve the meeting schedule as presented, with the exception of moving the Monday, September 26th, 2022, meeting to Monday, Tuesday, September 27th, 2022.
All right, so September 26th to September 27th, and that's because of Rashishon. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Donalyn Wales, discussion. Any other discussion? We prefer to vote on Mr. Mauer's amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8 to 0. On the main motion with the amendment, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Motion to amend the presented calendar to state 7:30 p.m. instead of 7:00 p.m.
Second Amendment, Mr. Mauer. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I stated, I believe 7:30 is in a more appropriate regular meeting time. It does allow us, without having to change any scheduling, to schedule town meetings at that 7 o'clock time as we normally do, which would allow the general public to get there, as well as not put any extra onerous schedule upon the LNA committee to meet before.
Mr. Mauer, any other discussion? Ms. Martin.
I initially was going to say I'm very comfortable with the 7 o'clock. The 7:30, I think, is worth consideration because, mainly because it appears that all of the LNA business is done prior to the council meeting. Where it used to meet at a separate time, and now it's right before the council meeting. That would be pushing that to 6:00, 6:30. So I'm going to support this motion for this amendment.
What I will say is that LNA can be held on any date prior to our Town Council meetings. It does not have to be on the Monday. It is not set as a required time or schedule. They are meet... LNA meets on a special agenda schedule. Mr. O'Rourke.
I'd also add that, I think, a 7 o'clock start might actually show quite a bit more improvement with regards to the townsfolk actually being able to attend these meetings more on a regular basis.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on...
What do you guys want?
I'm going to call for a vote on Mr. Mauer's second amendment. This would shift from 7:00 p.m., which is listed in our materials, to 7:30. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
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 All right. S fails 3 to 5. Back to our main motion, as we make a little dance around. This main motion incorporates the First Amendment, which changes the 26th to the 27th of September, which goes from a Monday to a Tuesday, as well as the initial 7:00 p.m. Start time is provided in the materials in our packet. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of our regular meeting schedule for 2022. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8 to 0. We have no matters of unfinished business and no matters of unfinished new business this evening, but we will not have public participation tonight, the second public participation. I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 9:41 p.m.
Have a good Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.